Good evening and welcome to the Rochester Board of Education Speaker Forum. Today is September 16, 2025. This evening, we will open the speakers forum to hear from a few folks who have signed up to speak with us. I do want to read the eligible speaker topics really quickly or briefly. The Board of Education values meaningful input from our community on matters under consideration such as feedback that can directly inform our discussions and decision-making on matters impacting our school district and its community. In alignment with Policy 2300 Board bylaws, the Board will host a monthly speaker forum dedicated solely to receiving public comments related to items listed on the agendas of the committee meeting, monthly work sessions, business meetings, and other public board meeting agendas established since the last speaker forum. And so with that, I am going to call our speakers that we have signed up, being two. Our first speaker for this evening is Ms. Maria Gonzalez.
I'm here supposed to talk about the budget, but I'm changing my conversation because issue going on on Freddie Thomas and fighting are going around. So I just wanted to get some help in Freddie Thomas in the morning and when school is over. Freddie Thomas, since he started, he been having fights outside by SIO. The police has been involved and the kids are bullying others and fighting. So the police have been called so they can break the fights and stuff like that. And we need to do something about it because somebody can get hurt. So I really need, so they can check that out because it's too early to have already problems at Freddie Thomas. Okay? Also, I have problem with, like I talked to you, Ms. Simmons, they haven't fixed the problem for my daughter. She still have the problem in number 50 school and there's a mess in there going on. So I really need, so maybe you can do it yourself because I don't know what's going on. They giving her the runaround, runaround, and she comes here to the board, not the board meeting, but the building and they give her another story. So you have to, you know, she came to me crying. So, you know, I'm just letting you know more. And I told her to be here in the meeting today, but she needs to work, you know? So if she don't work, how you gonna, you gonna take care of her kids, especially with the one with autism, then he needs meds. So, and she really needs the help with that. So that's all I have to talk today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I do want to recognize that Superintendent Rosser is currently commuting from another meeting with plans to have been here. So he will get that update as well, and I'd want to acknowledge that. Our next speaker is Ms. Lori Thomas as well.
In my research, I found that the 2025-26 state aid to the Rochester City School District is $843,736,370, an increase of 8.92% from last year. This accounts for almost 77% of the approved budget. Google tells us that New York State School Districts spend between $880 and $935 million on payroll and compensation, leaving just $165 to $220 million to be spent on educating children. Dividing those numbers by the number of approximately enrolled students, that comes to approximately $8,000 to $11,000 per child. That means that after all the bills are paid, the district has $8,000 to $11,000 per child left over for their education. And that $8,000 to $11,000 per child is not enough to adequately meet the educational needs of every child in the district. Are we the people to believe that it is impossible to provide all of our children with an excellent education for $8,000 to $10,000 per child? USA provides a government report of RCSD spending. It states nearly $15 million is spent on instruction, yet nearly 86% of our children are failing. It says more than $8 million is spent on support services, yet we have a 66% absentee rate. $476.6 million is being spent on other expenses. What other expenses are being used in support of our children's failure? It seems that none of these expenditures are being utilized efficiently or effectively. This speaks volumes about a board that would approve a budget that offers no solutions to their failure, but only asks for more money to perpetuate it. The money you are asking for does not come from the state. It comes from the people, the people who pay federal, state, and local taxes. We, the people, supply the funding you have misused to miseducate our children for far too long. No more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And with no further speakers, that concludes our speakers forum for this evening with the Rochester City School District. At this time, we will go into a brief two-to-three-minute, I'll say three-minute recess so that we can transition to our board work session. Thank you. Thank you to our viewing audience for your patience. We are returning the Rochester Board of Education for our September 16 work session. This work session is taking place with the Council of the Great City Schools. Our facilitators, Dr. Ray Hart and Cindy Elsburn, will be engaging us this evening to look at grounding for goals and guardrails. This is ongoing work through the Rochester Board of Education to ground us in board goals and to, with the goal of becoming better governance individuals and more collectively, a better governance board. So I'm going to stop before I say the wrong thing and they catch me, and I'm going to turn the mic over to our facilitators for this evening.
You are perfect. Thank you. President Simmons and Commissioners, Superintendent Rosser, thank you all for letting us join you this evening. Ray Hart, I am the Executive Director with the Council of the Great City Schools, and I am joined by Cindy Elsburn, who is our manager of Governance Services. We'll do a quick recap, and then we're going to put you to work right away. So just as a quick recap, as you know, we share student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And we're going to go quickly through, and what we may need to do is make sure, there we go. And what we're going to do is quickly kind of recap how we got here, and then we'll dive into a conversation tonight that will lead us into finalizing the conversation about our goals and guardrails. And if you recall, earlier this summer, we shared with the board just kind of the structure of what accountability in a school system looks like. We talked about the community, first of all, and this is the Communities School District. It is the Rochester City Community School District. That community elects school board members to represent them, which is your role. You as school board members hire a superintendent to manage the day-to-day operations of the district. Your role as school board members is a role of governance. The superintendent's role is a role of management, and we'll talk about what that structure looks like in a moment. And then you've got your district staff, who are primarily responsible for all the support systems and educating the children and the scholars of the community. What you also have are the parents, students, and staff at the school level as well, who support the district. And so the community are the owners of the school district. You represent the owners as school board members, and we'll talk about what that representation looks like tonight. And then the customers are those who you are providing services to. In representing to the community, as board members, your primary responsibility is represent the vision and the values of the community. And that is primarily what we'll talk about this evening, is the vision and the values. And we had you go out, do community listening. We also pulled information from your prior community listening sessions, when you had your strategic plan done, when your superintendent went out and did community listening, when you did your superintendent search, and then the community listening that you just did. We pulled all of that information together to share a report with you that we'll go through in just a moment, to help, to support you in really creating the vision and the values for the district. And then you've already translated that vision into goals. We'll spend some time tonight, later tonight, not initially, reviewing those goals. But we'll start with the values that you've observed and really defining what the values are of the community, and then translating those values into guardrails. And then from that process, having listened to the community for that, the board will now create the guardrails, and then we'll review the goals that you've already created. And those guiding principles will become the foundation for what you share with the superintendent, for what the community expects of its school board members. So we just wanted to start here with kind of a recap of where you, where you are. This process is the foundation for board work, and we'll go through this full cycle. This actually, this cycle actually goes through the superintendent, staff, parents, and then back up to the board in terms of feedback and monitoring. And we'll talk about that as well a little later this evening. So with that, just to wrap up, our core beliefs that we've talked about throughout this process is that school systems exist for one reason and one reason only, and that is to improve outcomes for students. And the role of the board is to represent that vision and values of the community. And finally, the last thing we'll share before we go into the next step of the process is that as a board, the work that we're doing now will help you establish a focus for the district, where as a board, you're focused on the governance work of the district, which is focusing on the student outcomes and what we call student outcome goals, which you will draft and develop tonight, and then also the guardrails. Those will translate into the directives that you give to the superintendent and what you'll monitor from the superintendent as you go. So with that, I'll turn things over to my colleague Cindy, who will take us through the next phase of the process and actually get you working initially on, on the goals.
All right. Yeah. So congratulations on completing your community listening campaign, and thank you for doing that work. What you have in front of you, you have a few different documents in front of you, but one is the RCSD Community Listening Synopsis Report. If we could all just take a few minutes to scan through that report on our own, and then would like to open up with just some reflections on that, reflections on the process of community listening, and what you noticed from what has emerged as far as themes for vision and values. As you're reading through this synopsis, is there anything that stands out? Anything anyone would like to share about the process, about?
Yeah. So one thing I'm looking at is the comparison of the listening sessions from the board and how that translates to what we saw with the superintendent's search, feedback, and other sessions. I see an overlap or an alignment, more or less, around some of the key areas like literacy, communication, and so on. And then I see some other themes that have come out. So definitely some buckets and themes that we can pull from. I'm happy to know that we will have opportunity to make community listening sessions more regular, as we have already provided some of the feedback as far as this round was just getting started. And so we didn't have what I would believe to be representative of the community voice with the same individual showing up, a handful of folks. Voices valued, however, not fully representative of the community. So with continued effort and maybe trust-building, we may begin to see that, but the alignment was there.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes. Commissioner Griffin.
Yes, thank you. I totally agree with what President Simmons was saying. I also would like to add, when it comes to the community listening sessions, I believe that we should have it more at a recreation center and where we can speak to and see a lot of adults coming in at certain times, making sure that the adults, the parents, I should say, or any adults could be present, because the hours that we had these community listening sessions were not conducive to working people, working families. That was when I, when I went to my, my particular event, community listening session, it was one parent there, and she was on her lunch break. And she was a fairly young mother, very appreciative that she even made it there. And she has three kids, young kids, and she's very, very knowledgeable about what's going on in the district, and she's very hands-on. Unfortunately, her friends couldn't come.
Yeah.
She was the only one that could come. So she was the one for everyone. So in the future, listening sessions, we need to make sure that we're having it at a time that is conducive to the parents. Like we have the Boys and Girls Club. We have, we have the recreation centers on Baden, I mean, on Number Nine School. We have Lewis Street Center. We have Gardner, you know, we have all the YMCA on Thursday. We have a lot of different areas. So we might, we have to make sure that when we're having these community listening sessions, we're having it at the best time where we can speak to a lot of the parents involved. Thank you.
Thank you for your observations, and this is definitely, definitely continuous improvement is, is the name of the game. And as you keep note of those types of things, as the board plans further community listening sessions, those sessions, those are things definitely to keep in mind, um, when the board does that work. Commissioner Malloy.
Thank you. Yeah, similar to what other people have said so far, um, I appreciated that we have engaged in this process. I'm looking forward to having more community listening and making that a, a regular part of our repertoire as, as a board. Um, in terms of what I felt, well, the sample sizes though, uh, it's not adequate sampling from the people who showed up. And I was very appreciative to have, um, that participation, um, but we need to make sure that we're reaching more people, um, from the broader community, uh, so that we can get those sample sizes much larger and more reflective of the community that we represent. Um, but I really appreciated, uh, many people who came out, uh, and, you know, spent time listening to us and as, as we went through scripts, you know, that was, that was a little uncomfortable, uh, for myself. I, I, I'm used to, as a teacher, more improvisation. And so having to follow a set script, I'm sure it's something I'll become more comfortable with. Um, the information was great, but it, it was definitely, there was a learning curve, uh, for me. One thing I noticed though is the overlap, similar to what President Simmons said, between some of the other community listening that took place, um, during our superintendent's search with the firm and then also the previous strategic plan process. Literacy seems to be the most common theme, um, having basic skills, arith- arithmetic, uh, reading, writing. Um, I, I was surprised to see that, that social emotional learning is right up there as well for, for many people. Um, and I don't think that we want to lose sight of that. But thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for those observations. Commissioner Santiago.
Thank you. Um, I believe that the community sessions, uh, were, were good. I think the takeaway is for me is just the set questions. Um, I will like to say that, you know, before this community listening tour, there were initiatives, you know, to, to have the community listening sessions, um, in different ways that, that we had, we have had them. Um, and so some of these, uh, answers were answers, of course, that, that we've heard in the past, but I think the questions and the set questions were good questions. Um, I don't believe that a script is needed, to be honest with you, and I'll say that upright. It doesn't seem authentic to me. Um, I think that set questions is something that, that is good to, to have. Um, and I know that we're all trying to walk and move on one accord and one message. Um, but I don't think that having a script is the best way to do that. Um, but that, I think also that there's different ways that we can expand as far as how we're engaging, uh, more than just they're sitting and ta- at tables and we're talking to them and they're talking back and there's nothing else that can be said. And so I just think that there's better ways to engage, um, the community. I think that there's, um, there's ways to get the answers without the script, without the format, um, but I think that the questions were focused, which is something that is important in comparison to possibly some of our last community sessions. And so that's a takeaway for me. Um, but everything else, I just think we could do more, you know, energetic to make sure that we're listening to the community. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for those observations. And again, those are all things that are, um, valuable for you all to keep track of as you develop and, um, further listening down the road and, and format and discuss at later times when you, when you go out again. Yeah, Commissioner Patterson.
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, personally, I love the script. Uh, it kept us, you know, um, all the commissioners, um, in line with what we should be saying and what we should be asking. And we didn't go off on our own, adopt our own questions or change the questions, uh, in a format that might not be understandable to, you know, the general public. So, you know, I like the format. Um, I thank you for putting it together. Um, I liked the venue, um, that I was part of, um, within the community. Um, the only thing I didn't, and again, I'm, I'm in agreement with my colleagues, is that there wasn't definitely, definitely enough participation, you know, from the community. So, you know, the community, uh, often complains, but when they have an opportunity to step up and voice their opinion in an organized fashion, they don't show up. So we had maybe two, three people, you know, and, and the, the two I participated in. Um, and then as a matter of fact, uh, one, the second one, um, one, uh, individual left and the other two I had already seen at my first, you know, one. So it's like, wait a minute, I've already documented, you know, we've already documented these responses, you know, why are you back again? You know, so, um, again, I think that needs to be clear, you know, attend one, you know, session, um, you know, so it doesn't skew the results. Um, so that would be my advice. Uh, you know, maybe we didn't do a good job, um, our PR people, you know, putting it out there that, hey, these listening sessions or, or whatever you want to call them, um, that, you know, here's, you know, where they are, here's the times, dates and things like that. So we have to take a look at ourselves too as, uh, RCSD and say, did we do a good job in publicizing, you know, these events?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for those observations. Again, um, this is, I, I appreciate, um, these reflections and I think, uh, keeping, keeping this in mind moving forward as the board does this work because this is definitely board work, um, will help you all continue to, to improve, offering those, making sure that you have greater and greater community involvement, um, all of those things. So thank you. Anyone else?
Lastly, say that, you know, um, this reflecting, it also speaks to our responsibility to be responsive to requests as well, because I think this was supposed to have happened several, several months ago, like back in 2024. And so giving that recognition, um, and effort from, from the board clerk to get us going and, and thus including myself, right? Not getting, responding with times and things of that nature brought us all the way to this date. And, uh, so I do want to acknowledge that. And then it was kind of, we've got to do it and they did their best to get it out. And so I think with that, um, recognizing how we move forward, um, will allow us to push this, um, the way it needs to be.
Definitely. And again, um, this is, this is a matter of continuous improvement and it, I'm glad you said moving forward because that's what we're going to, um, do. You have information in front of you. Um, we can, we can continue moving through the process. Um, and as you, as I mentioned, as you continue, uh, making community engagement and outreach part of, a more regular part of your repertoire, um, you can continue to improve how that, how that's done, um, how it's advertised, how you welcome and, um, invite people into giving their input. Uh, those are all, those are all great things. Um, and with, let's get started with the goal, or with, actually, we're going to start with guardrails. We always say goals and guardrails, but we're gonna, we're gonna start, um, with guardrails first. So if you recall, what, what do you all recall about guardrails? Do you remember those, the format of how we write guardrails?
It's, uh, the superintendent shall not.
Yes, they are shall nots. Um, they put boundaries around super, the superintendent, um, what the non-negotiable values of the community that need to be protected while the superintendent is working toward accomplishing the goals. Um, so what you'll be looking at as you go through this process are those values, the non-negotiables, um, from the community listening synopsis and thinking about what emerges as the, those top guardrails to reflect in guardrail policy. Um, one of the other items that you have in front of you as we go through this process, because you're going to do a little bit of work on your own, then we're going to pair up and then, um, get into two small groups and then we'll do, uh, then we'll get, uh, get some stuff on the chart paper, um, so that we can start as a whole board and so you all can have the conversations around narrowing down to those one to five, and we recommend one to three guardrail policies. So one of the things, and I, you'll have a guardrail drafting worksheet in front of you, um, which kind of tells the steps, it does tell, it doesn't kinda, it does, tell the steps of brainstorming guardrails. So just to start off with an example, the first thing, the first step that we want to do is to isolate the value. So get clear about the community value that you're trying to protect and narrow it down to one word. So for example, is bullying a community value? Bullying. Would you call that a community value or an issue? An issue. So what might, if someone, um, talks about bullying, what is that underlying value that?
Social emotional wellbeing.
Social, social emotional wellbeing may be one. What might be another?
Safety.
Safety? Yeah. Let's, let's take the safety, um, example. So then the second step, we have that isolated value of safety. Then we want to scope the value. So what are one or two adjectives to clarify the scope of the value? So how would you further define that value of safety?
Protection, protecting the students, protecting...
Student safety?
Yeah.
Yep, that could be one way of doing it.
Safe classroom?
Safe classroom.
Safe classroom environment?
Yep, safe classroom environment. So, cl- safety in the classrooms, classroom safety.
Safety outside of school, outside of, um, school property?
Safety outside of school property.
I mean, so would that be the same as safe school culture?
Safe school culture. Might go into psychological safety, you might go into the social emotional safety, you might go into physical safety, you might go into staff safety. There's all sorts of ways you could describe safety, but you're want, you'll want to think about what you heard from the community as you do that.
So, uh, you say, uh, we basically all said similar things about the safety of children. So I mean, we're, it's all still the same, governed under the same umbrella, correct? Or is it something else you're trying to get at? I'm just trying to understand.
No, I'm just trying to give examples for you all to brainstorm.
Alright, cool.
Because pretty soon you're going to brainstorm on your own. So we just want to make sure that, um, each step is clear.
Okay.
So that, that was step two, scoping the value. Um, then you would create your draft guardrail. Uh, and on that sheet, there are some st- sentence stems that you could, uh, use. For example, the superintendent will not allow conditions that harm, insert scoped value, that will not harm student psychological safety. Um, or the superintendent will not make decisions that harm, uh, staff physical safety. Whatever, whatever that scoped value is. And the, and, um, so that's, that's what you would do next. Then the, is everybody, any questions so far on how that's all working? Um, once you've written the, written down your one to five, each, each of you individually is going to write down one to five, one to five values, one to five scoped values. And then, um, write those sam- those draft guardrail statements. Then you just reflect and see if any editing needs to happen for more clarity, um, to better match the community value you're thinking of, that you're trying to protect. And you can also then, step four is choosing the lef- level of specificity. And there's some examples there. You could use broad statements like major decision or more defined statements that, such as decisions that impact more than 10% of the budget or impact more than 10% of schools. So, um, you'll just have some latitude to, to add it to the amount of specificity that you believe is impro- appropriate based on that community value and the listening synopsis and what you heard. And that's where we'll start. And then we'll get in, um, so we're going to start by you filling out that front and back worksheet. So you'll go through steps one, two, three A, three B, and four on the front and back of that first worksheet. And Dr. Rosser and State Monitor, you are also welcome to participate, uh, and, and draft so that you can be part of the discussions. It's ultimate, these will ultimately be the boards, um, but that might help lend to some more robust discussion to have, have additional participation. You can write up to five, but you don't have to. Any questions? Go ahead and, and write. And if you have a question come up, just let us, let us know. Raise your hand or yell or whatever. What was the question? Oh. Okay. Okay. Just, just one thing I wanted to mention. Those sentence stems on the, um, community listening, or on the, excuse me, on the sample guardrails. There might be a different way of writing it that makes more sense, depending on what your value is that doesn't quite fit. So as long as it's a thou shall not statement, you don't have to use those, those are just samples.
So as you start to fill in your blanks, uh, don't forget, uh, move on to step two, step three, uh, and then step four. And if you have questions as you go, if you have a question about, um, one of the guardrails that you've written down, please feel free to let us know. So, uh, step one, identify the value in a single word and then move on to step two, step three, and step four. And you'll finish with one to five guardrails.
David, just- Son. God damn. Run down like flies.
Are we turning this in? Like the paper or like just our thoughts and ideas? When you say that, we're sharing it. This is my paper. Okay. Just making sure. Yeah, thank you.
It's kind of like when my students ask me if something's getting graded, like, do I have to turn this in? Can I make a comment by any chance? Um, I'm struggling a little bit as I just reread what I've written. I feel like it's way too broad. And I don't, I know we don't want to give directives with a guardrail. But sometimes things can be so broad that they are open to multiple interpretations. Just depends on who you ask. So how can we be sure that it's reflective of the values that we've collected now from our community?
So, good question. There's two ways that we'll handle that in the process. The first of which is, uh, what we're-
And the first thing we want you to do is, as your pair, each of you has written down anywhere from one to five guardrails. In your pairs, we want you to narrow and we want you to talk to each other about what you've written down, how you've translated the values into guardrails. And we want you to come up with four as a pair, no more than four. So let's say, for example, each of you wrote five different things and you've got 10 different guardrails, you've got to narrow those 10 down to four. Does that make sense to everyone? So as a partner, you and your partner need to take and narrow the guardrails you've written, narrow those from 10 to four. You can revise language, you can combine language with your partners. So you mentioned earlier, is my language too broad? Is my language too specific? Take the language of your partners if they have something similar. It's pretty easy to start this process by saying, what are our similarities? And then once you get your similarities, narrow those down and then decide on the others. So you'll narrow the guardrails that you've written down, down to four as a pair. Everyone got your partners? Everyone good? All right. You can play musical chairs, meet with your partners. If two of you want to come down to this dais down below, you can. Or you could just bounce around up top.
Can I make a comment by any chance? I'm struggling a little bit as I just reread what I've written. I feel like it's way too broad. And I know we don't want to give directives with a guardrail. But sometimes things can be so broad that they are open to multiple interpretations. Just depends on who you ask. So how can we be sure that it's reflective of the values that we've collected now from our community?
So good question. There's two ways that we'll handle that in the process. The first of which is, what we're about to do now is a process where you'll, first of all, pair up and then you'll get together as a board to think through, rewrite wordsmith to some extent, not extensively, but wordsmith to some extent. The guardrails that you've created so that you hone in on exactly what the community, what you all collectively feel the community share. The second part of that process, which is an important part of the process, once you've finalized your guardrails, you'll turn those guardrails over to the superintendent and his team to interpret what that guardrail means. And so when the superintendent and their team interpret, they're going to create measures for, that will allow the board to know, here's the progress we're making in accomplishing the guardrails that you set. If those measures don't meet your expectations, you can go back and revise the language. So there's multiple steps in the process that will allow you to revise the guardrail to get to a place where the board is comfortable, the superintendent is comfortable that we're on the same page and here's how we're going to move forward.
And that work that the superintendent and his team is working on, that would be the creation of those interim guardrails in response?
Yep, their interim guardrails and then they'll create interim goals as well.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone about set? Need a few more minutes? Need some more time? Okay, we'll give you, wait, we'll give you more time if you're all still working. So we'll give you more time. Did that answer your question? All right. If you're still working, we'll let you go ahead and continue working. You'll work with your partners and with your pairs. So don't panic if you haven't gotten through all of them. We're going to go ahead and partner you up and we're going to play musical chairs. So we're going to mix things up a little bit. We got you. You're good. So a couple of things, the first of which is, and he stepped out of the office, out of the office, out of the room. But we'll have Commissioner Patterson, we'll have you partner with Mr. Alisea. So we'll have you partner with him so you can come join him down here. Then we'll have a couple of other partners. If you want to stay up at the dais near your seats, that's fine. If not, you can move down here. Don't move yet. I'll give you your partners' names first and then we'll play musical chairs. So Commissioner LeBron and Commissioner Elliott, you all will work together as a pair. Commissioner Patterson I just shared, Superintendent Rosser, Commissioner Griffin and Commissioner Malloy, you will work together as a triad. So it'll be three of you. And then Commissioner Santiago and Commissioner Simmons, you all will work together as a pair. And the first thing we want you to do is, as your pair, each of you has written down anywhere from one to five guardrails. In your pairs, we want you to narrow and we want you to talk to each other about what you've written down, how you've translated the values into guardrails. And we want you to come up with four as a pair, no more than four. So let's say, for example, each of you wrote five different things and you've got 10 different guardrails, you've got to narrow those 10 down to four. Does that make sense to everyone? So as a partner, you and your partner need to take and narrow the guardrails you've written, narrow those from 10 to four. You can revise language, you can combine language with your partners. So you mentioned earlier, is my language too broad? Is my language too specific? Take the language of your partners if they have something similar. It's pretty easy to start this process by saying, what are our similarities? And then once you get your similarities, narrow those down and then decide on the others. So you'll narrow the guardrails that you've written down, down to four as a pair. Everyone got your partners? Everyone good? All right. You can play musical chairs, meet with your partners. If two of you want to come down to this dais down below, you can. Or you could just bounce around up top.
All right, we'll go ahead and we'll go ahead and get started. As you might imagine, as some of you discussed, there are a couple of things that are important about not only this process. Oh, that's not good. There are a couple of things that are important about not only this process, but all the process of setting goals as well. And that is if everything is important, then what?
Nothing.
Then nothing is important. If everything is important, then nothing is important. So one of the critical things for the board is to make sure that the board is narrowing So one of the critical things for the board is to make sure that the board is narrowing its focus. Yeah, that's why I shared earlier, but if, if everything is important, nothing is important. If the board now can't narrow the expectations of the superintendent, and I say can't, you will, because we're about to go through that process, but narrow the expectations of the superintendent so that you are limited to one to five goals and one to five guardrails. What you are doing as a board is you're doing the hard work of figuring out what are the things that are the highest priority? So what are those things that are highest priority as a collective group? And then as a collective, we will narrow those things down. What we're gonna do now is we're gonna go to each group and we're gonna ask you to read off one and only one of the things that you've written on your, on your chart. And we'll do it one group at a time. What I will ask is if you have something similar to what was written by your colleagues, please share that similarity at that time. So let's say that someone shares something that's their number one, but it was your number three. Share it, and what we'll do is wordsmith them together and we will add them to the chart. And so we're gonna take what each of you has individually and we're going to narrow them down to a set that you, you'll then as a board deliberate on. Does that make sense to everyone? All right, so it doesn't matter who begins, so I'll ask you who would like to, which group would like to go first? All right, so Commissioner Patterson, your hand was first, go ahead and read one of yours. And actually, if you, you're all at microphones, so you're all good.
We came up with, "The superintendent shall not make decisions that impact student outcomes without consulting with its stakeholders."
So the superintendent, before you write it, before you write it, "The superintendent shall not make decisions," Cindy, hold on, hold on before you, okay, "the superintendent shall not make decisions that impact student outcomes without..."
Consulting with its stakeholders.
Without consulting with stakeholders. So does anyone have anything similar to that? So you all have something similar, you all have something similar, what, what did you have that was similar?
She said, "The superintendent will not make any major district-wide and school decisions without seeking the input of stakeholders that represent the school, home, and broader community."
Okay, so the superintendent shall not make any decisions, major decisions, all right, any major decisions that don't represent the, I say minor, that don't, don't,
That should represent the school, home, and broader.
The school, home, and broader community, that's what I captured. So before we move on to yours, is that similar to yours?
It is.
It is, and we'll talk about which language is you prefer before we write it, but, so we got that one, that one, and then what is yours?
I think we had a semi-similar one, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that do not promote student or community engagement," so.
So the superintendent will not allow conditions that promote,
That do not promote.
That do not promote student, um, community engagement. Is that similar to the two that you all established, you all shared?
It's in the family.
All right, so it's in the family. Is there, I'm gonna pick one just arbitrarily. This one had more words, so I'm gonna pick the one that's more wordy, but is the one that's more wordy capture your idea?
It does.
It doesn't capture your idea? All right, did you all have anything similar? Okay, do you wanna take, you wanna capture that one and then we can write that one down? Does that process make sense to everyone? All right, so we got, so we had three groups that had something similar. Sorry about that, Cindy. All right, so while she's writing that one down, we'll move on to the next one. Which group would like to share next? Anyone?
Yeah, I've got a clipboard.
Oh, she has your board. Go, go ahead. That's all right, go ahead, they're gonna share up here.
I know, but I gotta move the mic over here, and I had to move our thing because it's not sticking over here. Um, which one do you want me to read, Cindy? Any of them?
Any, whatever, whichever one you think is,
We're gonna start with number one.
Highest priority, highest priority for you.
Yeah, "The superintendent shall not allow any district communication or action to lack consistency or to fail to provide a direct and honest account of district performance, challenges, or goals."
So you got two and one, sounds like you got two and one. "The superintendent shall not allow any communication that lacks clarity and consistency?" I'm going off memory, "and does not fully communicate?"
An honest account of district performance, challenges, and goals.
And goals, okay. Uh, so the superintendent shall not allow those two things. I won't try to, to repeat them, but did anybody have anything similar? All right, so we'll go, since she's got your chart, we'll go here first and then we'll go back. But listen to make sure that the language is similar and then we'll decide who's right, go ahead.
Our, our second one was, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that harm academic or fiscal transparency slash accountability."
Okay.
Which is kinda, kinda to the same of what she said, but a little less words.
Okay, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that harm academic or fiscal transparency and accountability." Does that sound similar?
No, um, I do think I have a goal that sounds similar to, or shall not, if you will.
Okay.
It's our second one, I think, sounds similar to that.
So, so that one, so, so that one to you doesn't sound similar to when you wrote.
To the one I just read, but it does sound similar to the second one.
So that one was about academic and fiscal transparency and accountability. Yours is about communication?
And honesty, honest communication, yes, about, with the performance, challenges, and goals of the district.
Okay.
Because my core word for this one, the value word that I started with, was honesty for number one, transparency is my second value, and I think that's where it fits with their number two.
So you got, so their number two has transparency. When you say second value, transparency was another one that, that was written? Gotcha, so honesty was the value that was being captured there. Uh, you said you had something similar.
I guess, just hearing that, um, ours was more similar, I think, to the transparency that they mentioned.
Okay.
Not to their first one. I was looking at it in terms of like accountability.
Okay.
But, um, now that I better understand it, I, I don't think that it matches, but there is that word accountability and transparency that we heard from all groups.
So we can do two things, and you may wanna, go ahead and read yours, yeah, go ahead and read yours, don't, don't forget to use a microphone.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, ours was accountability and growth. "The superintendent will not foster a culture and climate that is absent of accountability and professional growth."
Okay, so the superintendent shall not foster a climate that is absent from accountability and growth. So we'll take the honesty one, can we write that one down separately? Um, as number two, and then we'll go back and take the three that we heard and potentially, you may have one as well, but, um, the three that we heard and we'll make the transparency and accountability, um, we'll talk through those three together.
We're gonna read the transparency one, I'm sorry.
Beg pardon?
You want me to read our transparency?
Yep, the honest, read the honesty one, not the transparency one, just the honesty one, so we'll capture that separately.
Okay, it's, "The superintendent shall not allow any district communications or actions to lack consistency or to fail to provide a direct and honest account of district performance, challenges, or goals." No, no, it's okay, that, that's not allow any district communication or, or action to lack consistency or to fail to provide a direct and honest account of district performance, challenges, or goals. Or to fail to provide a direct, honest account of district performance, challenges, or goals. Fail to provide a, a direct and honest account of district performance, challenges, or goals.
So of district performance, challenges, or goals. All right, um, so then we've got three, at least three, and we'll check with this team to see if you had anything similar. Uh, but the superintendent, this one I'll read again, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that harm academic, fiscal, uh, academic or, I'll say put in the or, academic or fiscal transparency and accountability." Go ahead and read yours, which was a different one.
Yep.
And don't forget to use a microphone.
Yeah. So the same, I stopped writing, "The superintendent shall not," I just, so. It's, "The superintendent shall not allow any student academic data or a progress report on the district's educational goals to be communicated to the board without clear, accessible, disaggregated information and how, on how different students are performing."
Okay, does this, uh, so this, this is a little more concise than your wording, but does this capture the same thing that you shared? Okay?
Yeah.
Um, and then read yours that goes with this one once more.
"The superintendent will not allow conditions that are inequitable to learn, grow, and post-secondary access."
Uh, no, 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 the one related to transparency.
Oh, you're still on accountability?
Yep, still on transparency and accountability, yep.
"The superintendent will not foster a culture or climate that is absent of accountability and professional growth."
So the only thing that this one has, uh, this one doesn't have that yours has, is professional growth? Uh, can we add trans, professional growth to this language, you know, capture all three?
That, that sounds like a different value to me, though.
Say again?
So that sounds like a different value to me.
Professional growth?
Yeah, what does, I mean, I hear professional growth.
Professional, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I hear professional growth and, you know, and that's important, but what does that have to do with transparency and accountability?
It speaks to reflect.
It's fostering the culture and climate.
Right.
So culture and climate is the space that the superintendent is not fostering, is not fostering a culture and climate that is absent of accountability and.
In person, bro.
I also see it going along with our idea around the academic, um, conditions as well. Professional growth would definitely directly correlate with academic outcomes or no?
Yep. Okay, so don't add the professional growth.
I was right, I knew it.
Accountability without support is cruelty. So.
It's convoluted.
Add it.
So how do we push, how do we? Okay.
And then if it makes it on the list, then it makes it on the list, right.
Okay, I'm kinda, I'm getting, I just wanna backpedal for a minute. The one we're looking at is accountability and growth, and the one you guys have up there, Isaiah and, um,
Is accountability and transparency.
It's number two. So it's accountability and transparency. So the superintendent will not allow conditions that harm academic and fiscal transparency and accountability. Correct. So let's just take this one, uh, we'll come back to the professional growth. Or we'll think through the professional growth. Uh, let's just take this one for now. Uh, "The superintendent will not allow conditions that harm academic and fiscal transparency and accountability." And it still cap, captures yours, correct, about transparency?
Roughly.
All right.
I, I, I just have to say, I think that is too vague for me as a guardrail because saying like, allow, not allow conditions, who's determining those conditions? What other conditions, what's the standard that kicks it off? For, so for me, it is getting academic reports that we can understand, that we can read, that we know what's being reported, but also, and this was part of Cynthia Elliott's, Commissioner Elliott's conversation and myself, I always think of the average person and parent, our, our report should not be written so complex that they can't follow along at home, and no one should need special training to understand how their school district is making decisions.
Yep.
So for me, they are a little bit different, but they do both hit the core value of transparency.
So two things, uh, just so, just so you'll be more comfortable as you move forward. The first of which is, as we, and we're gonna talk about what the reports from the superintendent to the board look like, um, and those monitoring reports, when we talked about monitoring, uh, we stipulate those monitoring reports are only five pages. And that there are five pages in language that is not education-y's, that it is public language. Um, so that's one thing, so we'll make sure that those reports are clear, clear. The second thing, um, that I'll share just related to that, um, is the guardrail will have with it specific measures, so all these guardrails that we're creating are gonna have measures. So you'll be able to see in those measures whether or not the superintendent and the team are interpreting them the way you intend. Does that make sense? So there's two, there's two kinda backstops to make sure that what you just shared gets covered. All right? Um, who would like to share their next one?
He said the next, next one.
Yep, anyone? You can share another one if you have, if we haven't caught, because you've only got one of yours so far, right?
Well, you, you forgot me.
Say again?
You forgot me again when I raised my hand, so, you know.
No, 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 we're going around the room, you went first.
I think our next one is, "The superintendent shall not allow the implementation of an academic and social-emotional program that does not meet the needs of all the students."
So the superintendent shall not,
Allow.
Um, implement an academic or social-emotional program that does not, that does not meet the needs of all students. Anyone have something similar?
I do. Soon as I heard, I was like, ooh, we got something that matches that. Commissioner Elliott and I have that the superintendent shall not allow the district to implement or continue any curriculum, program, or practice without a clear research-based rationale that demonstrates its effectiveness, um, for the specific populations it is intended to serve.
That's got more language. Did you, did you hear that one?
Yes.
Is it similar? You gotta decide, otherwise it's.
It is, it is similar, so, uh, it just has a lot of words. Will people remember all that? Oh, sorry, will the superintendent remember all that?
Yeah, okay. Uh, can I just say, um, I, I wanted to spell out the curriculum, program, and practices because there are three separate things.
So can we add curriculum?
Law, policy, practice.
So can we add curriculum, programs, and practices to this statement?
Yeah.
Is that, are you all amenable to that amendment? Uh, so the superintendent shall not allow the implementation of academic curriculum, can we say, let's say academic? Yep, academic. And social, emotional. Curriculum. Programs. Or practices. That do not meet the needs of all students. Yeah, do you all have something, that's why I say, do you have something similar? If it's similar, then we can, that's why, if you have something similar, share it.
"Superintendent will not allow conditions that are inequitable to learning, growth, and post-secondary access." Somewhat similar. Somewhat similar.
I have a question.
Might just limit it to secondary, though.
It's not. It says to learning, growth, and post-secondary access.
The superintendent shall not allow what? Read the whole thing.
The superintendent will not allow conditions that are inequitable to learning, growth, and post-secondary access.
Equitable or inequitable?
Inequitable, thank you.
If we add at the beginning of that one, because what you're, what you're adding here is equity, just an equity issue, but if we say the superintendent shall not allow inequitable implementation of academic, social, emotional curriculum, programs, and practices that do not meet the needs of students, does that capture it?
I guess, I guess where I have the problem is, in being a faculty, it is something that we think is too wordy.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Yeah, inequitable is fine, when we get to the bottom, all of that, yeah, at the bottom it's kind of wordy. Is it something we can do to like bring that together at the bottom? I'm fine with the statement, but not the way it is the word wording at the bottom.
So we can, we can wordsmith it later, we've got you.
Yeah, like reduce the wording.
Later. Are you all comfortable, if we add inequitable at the beginning of that, are you all comfortable that it addresses the needs of all students?
Yeah, you could take that out.
So, no, are you all, are you all comfortable that it doesn't change the meaning of what you wrote?
What are you looking to change again?
If we add, if we had allow inequitable implementation at the top of that?
That's fine up there.
And then, does that, if, does that suffice for replacing your meets the needs of all students at the back, at the bottom end?
It's the same thing.
And I'll ask, I'll ask that next.
It still says the same thing. Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
You're good with it?
This might be separate and apart, but, because I do agree with like, making sure the curriculum and what have you are standard and equitable and research-based, all that good stuff. I'm struggling with social promotion, because one of the historical issues is that students have not mastered certain skills and find themselves socially promoted into the next grade level, and that's how we find students at the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade unable to master certain things. And so for our number one, we were talking about the matriculation of students, that the superintendent will not matriculate students who have not mastered, we put literacy, but we could say academic skills, like key academic skills, they're our foundational skills our students need, and how do we work that into this language where there's ownership or accountability that we talk about, that do not allow for our students to be grade-promoted in that manner, you know?
So I think two things, one is, it could be a separate guardrail, or what could also happen, and as a board, you'll need to make sure that you do this, because this is when we talk about, the board clearly articulating their expectations, so the superintendent and team are interpreting it correctly. It could be that the measure that you're looking for, which the superintendent will develop in an interim guardrail, that measure addresses that concern, you don't necessarily have to create a guardrail for it.
I think an interim would be good.
But we'll have to make sure that you get the language in a way that the superintendent's measure for how they come back and report to you, we're going to report this data to you, and that data will specify that we're making progress toward this guardrail. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So Commissioner LeBron, and please correct me if I, if I misquote what I heard, specify that there should be evidence-based incorporated within this, because an academic or social emotional curriculum program or practice, if it's not evident, there should be intentionality with making sure that it's evidence-based.
So I would say inequitable implementation of evidence-based.
Okay.
Yep, right there, right there, yep, yep.
I'm glad I gave that to you, superintendent.
What'd you say? Yeah. Are you all comfortable with, that's still, the inequitable, it means it's still encompassing all students, are you all comfortable with that? Or you want to keep the meets the needs of all students? Because it was your original statement.
Going through training that is student-centered, but we want to make sure that students.
That, well, they said that are student-centered. Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. So it's allow inequitable implementation of student-centered, right here in your space?
Yeah, that's good.
Of student, right here, right here, where my finger is, of student-centered, yep. Does that, does that work? Which group would like to go next? Covered all of yours? All right.
I just have one left.
You just have one left? Go ahead and give us your one while President Simmons is reading. Go ahead.
And if it's not clear, let me know. Says create a clear, step-by-step information for all departments, staff, and families that help parties understand the path for resolving issues in the district. What do I mean by that? I get all the calls, you know, I've said this before, I get phone calls, emails from parents, often it's an issue that they really could have been addressed with the school, and then if they were not satisfied with the school's feedback, they should have came down to central. That is not written for anyone anywhere. Culturally, I know that, because I've been in this system for over 25 years with kids and counting, but I had to learn that as a parent, and even myself, when I was just a parent, if you will, years and years ago with my first oldest, and I had an issue at the school and I wasn't happy with the resolve that I had with that principal, even myself, I wrote to the board, because I didn't know that there were chiefs, I didn't know that there were other people in the interim, and that often happens in this district, because parents just don't know, and we don't have that information anywhere for them to go to. So personally, I'm like, we should put, start training our staff and our families, because it's the same for staff. Staff either go to a direct supervisor, or they may or may not go internally to the next level, most of the time, they're not happy with a supervisor, they're jumping to the board, and I just think that we create problems that way, too, and by not even putting it out there clearly to our stakeholders, that this is how you resolve the issue, and these are the steps.
So it's clear lines of communication, so it's.
Yes.
Clear lines of effective communication. Does anybody have something similar?
I don't know, this probably, doesn't really go with that, but it's so crazy, because I just had that same, I just wrote an email this evening about that same topic. A few years ago, I asked, previous superintendent, of course, I mentioned that we need something to live on the district website, right, where parents could go, and, and a roadmap, a communications roadmap, if it's at the classroom level, they know exactly how to triage those issues, and.
Is that one of your four?
So I'm thinking, well, it goes under, for me, community and student engagement, it's, but it's probably not a guardrail as much as it would be, what is the other term you used, the little thing that goes under the guardrail? The measurement?
Interim, interim guardrail.
Yeah, I think it could be like an interim piece that.
So you won't be able to dictate the interims? The superintendent gets to pick what those are?
I'm just putting the.
You won't, you won't get to dictate them, but you can revise your guardrails to, if you need to, to add additional clarity, if the superintendent didn't interpret it that way. But let's take it the way it is right now, if it's okay with.
I'm just, I'm just asking quickly, I'm trying to understand it as a guardrail, because for me, that's more of a communication protocol, and that communication protocol is, is, is more related to a task. So developing the communication protocol is a task, and it doesn't, in my mind right now, I'm not, I'm trying to put it into the category of a guardrail.
Yeah.
So we can revise the wording, so it becomes more of a guardrail, but the superintendent shall not allow the district to, to function in a way that parents, community members, and others don't clearly understand the lines of communication. How you solve that is up to you.
Yeah, and the.
Some of this is out of my control. So even if we develop the protocol.
Yeah, it's not about, yeah, it's not about whether or not people adhere to the protocol, but it's a matter of how it's communicated.
Understood.
Yeah, no, I just want to like uplift that the value for me was resolve, resolution, that was the value, because, yeah, we're constantly, there's constant issues, constant situations, oftentimes, honestly, that could be solved right away, but because there's no clear direction for folks, it snowballs, and sometimes those situations put us in a position where we're responding to the media on something that we could have addressed internally and fixed it, kept it pushing, and kept things going. That's it, that's how sort of my mindset on that, thank you.
I, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole or anything, but I'm, I understand Dr. Ross and I understand Commissioner LeBron. I guess my concern is too that we're doing a lot of communication on the website, and then some people don't have, don't even get on, don't get on the web. So I, I mean, if we're talking about communications, I think it's, it's like to Dr. Ross's point, that's a, that's a big area there, because we have, we do a lot of communication, I see it on Facebook, but we don't utilize other avenues of, of advertisement that's conducive for people that are not, are not even computer literate, or don't have, so I think that that's a, that's a big area of concern, so I don't, how, how do we navigate that, really? Because it's gonna, we're still going to lose people, we're still not going to be able to reach those people, some people, we're not going to be able to reach everybody, but for the vast majority, and then some people that are not, don't go on Facebook or anything, what are we doing with that? How are we addressing that? So I don't know.
So the how, yes, the how, the guardrail says, don't, don't allow the district to operate in this way. The how the communication gets developed is the superintendent's job. Does that make sense? Whatever strategy, and then the superintendent will share with you, here's how we're going to measure that the community, or parents, or whomever else is feeling as though we're communicating with them effectively. So the how is up to the superintendent. The guardrail says, don't, don't allow the district to operate in this way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm trying to eat the boba, yeah.
Anyone, any others, so which, any groups have another one? So I know this group is tapped out, that group is tapped out, go ahead.
We had one more.
Hold on, hold on, if I could, you need to listen up, so you make sure you hear what they're, what they share.
Just something different, but the superintendent shall not allow working conditions that harm, let's see, staff retention.
Staff retention?
Right.
Superintendent shall not allow conditions that harm staff retention?
Yeah, working conditions that harm staff retention.
Okay. Superintendent shall not allow working conditions that harm staff retention. Yeah, I was going to say, you mind, you mind reading your number four, and then tell me if this number four is similar to what you have, but yours is specific to staff, so read your number four.
The superintendent will not allow conditions that do not foster social, emotional, and physical safety.
So you want to change psychological to social emotional?
Psychological is good, too, but I just said social emotional, but psychological.
Psychological safety in the workplace is a real thing.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, do you want to change it to psychological, or I think?
No, it can stay as psychological.
Okay. So this one says, the superintendent shall not allow conditions that do not foster psychological and physical safety. Does that capture what you shared, except that, and we can say student and staff, we can add student and staff, so that it's clear that this one is referring to student and staff psychological and physical safety. When you talk about retention, retention might be a measure of how you know that that's happening, but I wouldn't necessarily make the retention a guardrail. Does that make sense? So if we added, the superintendent will not allow conditions that do not foster student and staff psychological and physical safety, does that work? Does that cover what you shared? Want to make sure? Or do you want to leave it, you want to leave it staff retention?
We wouldn't use that retention.
Yeah, turn it, turn on.
We went with the retention, because it was talking about the transition, and when there's movement in leadership, staffing, and all that, that will affect, you know, stability, yeah. It's under stability, yes.
That might help. We put the superintendent will not make decisions that harm the stability in terms of leadership, teaching, peer professional or turn, peer professional turnover.
Was that one of your four?
That's one, that's the four, that's right here, yeah.
Okay.
With that, that's basically what he said.
So, so say, say it again?
Okay, so the superintendent.
Don't forget to use a microphone, because it.
The superintendent will not make decisions that harm stability in terms of leadership, teaching, and peer professional turnovers.
So I want to do two things, and I'll share with, and I'll ask you to weigh in as well. The first thing I'll share is, as you listen to these, there are, if you notice at the bottom of the report, that first page of the report, so R C S D Community Listening and Synopsis Report, at the bottom of that report, there's one of the things, one of the things that we wrote is a couple of things, but the most important is, we're going to go back, and we're going to develop actually board guardrails as part of our process as well, but one of the things we noted at the bottom of that sheet of paper, is that some of these could actually be board guardrails, as opposed to just superintendent guardrails, and so you'll need to think about, what is the responsibility of the board in terms of leadership churn, and what is the responsibility of superintendent in terms of leadership churn? But let's go back, let's read that one, go ahead.
And that's why we went with the staff, we knew that.
Yep.
Leadership was there.
Okay.
That's why we went with staff.
All right, so they've got, so we started with, the superintendent shall not allow, it was up top, sorry, thank you, the superintendent shall not allow conditions that harm, working conditions that harm.
Staff retention.
Staff retention, so that one's specific to staff retention, this one is specific to psychological and physical safety, and we can add staff and students, and yours is.
Stability.
Stability, so similar to staff retention, so stability to staff. So do you all want to create two different guardrails, or do you, are you all comfortable that if staff retention is addressed, it addresses, then you'll, you'll be comfortable the superintendent has not fostered conditions that do not, or not created conditions that do not foster physical and psychological safety?
As long as students are also in there, I think that.
So it's for students, so it's for students and, students and staff. Do you want to create two separate ones? So keep in mind, at the end of this process, we're writing them all down, at the end of this process, how many are you going to have?
Four, three?
So, one to five, preferably one to three, but one to five max. So if you create separate guardrails for students and another one for staff, they're going to eat up your one to five.
I think we need.
But you can, you can have two separate ones?
I know we're going to be.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I, I think that we should be strategic on this. I don't think we should have five. I mean, I think that we should find a way to encompass and bring things together, if we can, you know what I'm saying, to reduce it?
We will.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We will. Are you comfortable with that? Are you comfortable with that?
He's got a question.
Go ahead, you had a question, go ahead. Commissioner Patterson? Oh, he's got, okay. You, you raised your hand, sorry.
It is the, the explanation about, uh, the comment that you wrote at the bottom, but listening to the input from the community about the concerns about the staff, mobility of the staff, leaving, turnover, so, and leadership. Well, we went with the staff because when we talk about staff, we did, we are talking about superintendents, teachers, paraprofessional for service, everyone works in the district.
Okay.
It's all inclusive.
So you're, you're tapped out, uh, do you have any more? You're tapped out, do you have any more? You're done? You're done?
Yes.
All right.
So they do address stability in the guardrails that they're putting out right now?
Yes, yes. There's a specific to staff, but we got the message that we wanna add, we may create a separate one.
Maybe they think the community value was stability.
You can say, as stability, staff retention as stability.
And that's what we said, yeah, staff, yeah.
Stability for students or families or board.
I think we only need to add one more.
Oh, the psychological. Is that everything once I am back? Do you guys want to-
Done, done.
Nope, I think we're good, I think we got, I think we have, we should have, we're gonna recap. You got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we end up. All right, so we're gonna do a quick recap. We're gonna number these. Uh, you are now down to one, two, three, four. Actually, four is in the perfect spot, we don't have to renumber that, five, six, seven. So we're down to seven, uh, we're down to seven guardrails. We'll read them really quickly and we'll do two things. Uh, gonna give you each, um, a set of votes to help you prioritize, and then we'll have a conversation. So we won't do it just by voting, but we'll vote and then have a conversation. Uh, but you've got seven, you've got a narrow seven down to, to one to five. We'll read them really quickly. Number one is, uh, the superintendent shall not allow inequitable implementation of student-centered, evidence-based academic, social, and emotional curriculum, programs, and practices. Number two, the superintendent shall not allow unclear, ineffective communication of information for district departments, staff, and families to understand, uh, the path to resolve issues. Number three, superintendent shall not allow working conditions that harm staff retention and stability. Number four, the superintendent will not allow conditions that do not foster, uh, psychological and physical safety. Uh, do you, do you wanna make that for students? Students and staff, all right, you can make that students and staff. You can just put it over here, for, for students and staff. Uh, number five, the superintendent, uh, shall not make any major district-wide and school decisions without seeking the input of stakeholders that represent school, home, and broader community. Number six, the superintendent shall not allow any district communications or, or action to lack consistency or to fail to provide a direct account of district performance challenges or goals. And then number seven, the superintendent shall not allow conditions that harm academic and fiscal transparency and accountability. Any questions about those? Anybody need clarity on those? Anyone need questions or clarity on any of those? All right, everyone needs to pull out a piece of paper. Um, and we will give you three sets of votes. You got five votes, you got ten votes, you got fifteen votes. You can put it on a post-it note if you want, or you can just write it on a sheet of paper. All you need to do is write the number, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then take your five, ten, and fifteen votes and put them on the one. So the one that you think is most important, give that fifteen votes. The one that you think is second, give it ten, the one that you think is third, give it five. Does that make sense? Nope, you have fifteen, fifteen votes for fifteen points. Let's say points, not votes, fifteen points, ten points, and five points. Divvy up fifteen points, ten points, and five points around, your number one priority gets fifteen, your number two priority gets ten, your number three priority gets five. Does that make sense? And so just write the number, the number, and then the number of points that goes with it. And then, uh, take a break. So as you do that, uh, do you all wanna keep going? We're almost done, say again? You wanna keep going, all right, we'll keep going. Makes it easy. You can get up, you can get up and walk around too, you don't have to stay, you can stay there. Uh, write them down on a sheet of paper that you can give to us, uh, so it'll be anonymous. Write them down on a sheet of paper that you'll give to us, and then we'll plug it in. Uh, you can take a break if you need to, and then we'll, uh, call out the votes, and then we'll have a conversation to make sure that we didn't miss anything.
Okay, we're gonna collect their papers, then I can do it.
So hold on, hold on while you're voting. So we got one, um, we got one suggestion that seven and four are saying the same thing. Somebody say, yeah? They are? All right, so seven says, the superintendent will not allow conditions that do not foster, um, psychological and physical safety for students and staff. And then number seven says, the superintendent shall not allow conditions that harm academic and fiscal transparency and accountability. I thought when we went through it, we said that-
They're not the same, but they're talking about hard and safety. It's hard to, is it some way that we can merge them together to address the needs for both instead of having two separate ones?
Yeah, psychological and physical safety, I think are a little different than-
I think the safety word, the word safety in there is, is, is what was bothersome because-
Well, safety is the value. So that's the, that's the value you're after, is safety. At the, the bottom one, the value is accountability.
I mean, but I, I, and that's the problem. I see, I favor, I vote for them in some way, but it's, it's how do you, how do you, when you, when you talk about hard and safety, I feel as though I'm at the top, that you gotta look at- Does that make sense?
I put a G R.
Got it. Yep. He was trying to combine it too, but I think they're different. Do you see all of these seven as being different, or is one of them the same?
Which two? Make sure I get everybody. What? I got it, I got it. Fifteen points to number five, ten points to number one. Yep, so we got two. You have your, uh-
Yes, I do.
We're gonna talk about the goals quick. Should go pretty- Out, like- Right, right, right. Oh, that's like, that's what it sounded like. What are you doing? Of information, and seven is- That is about challenges, and two is about, um, communicating to family and about, resolution. Who else, uh, who else is finished that I haven't gotten there? Do you have your points? One, one gets- Everything was in here, I think. We just, yeah, we, we just- Oh, wait, 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 no, you can only, can only vote for, you can only use fifteen once? Five once and ten once? One thing can have fifteen, one thing can have ten. You get to vote for three. Yep. Your top three. So one gets, one gets a fifteen. Your, your topmost gets a fifteen, your second gets a ten, and your third gets, third place for you gets a five. Only two more people left? Oh, I think Dr. Ross or Dave. Oh, you want? Thank you. Okay, Dr. Ross or Dave, one, two, do we take, yeah? Okay, then let's leave it, or, or let's go with what we got. Four gets fifteen, one gets ten, and five gets five. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so-
I'll give you the points.
the way that the points are reflected, right? Eighty-five, and then there's some that are just a straggling ten, which could have been any one of us just put our ten points on that one. So, yeah, it's a no for me. For me, I want to support three guardrails, and for me, the three clear winners is eighty-five points, forty points, fifty points.
Okay. Anyone else? So, the only decision here is whether or not to accept... So, we'll do it this way. Whether or not to accept a guardrail that only got fifteen votes, and if you don't accept the guardrail that got fifteen votes as a board, and you stick with just three, then we won't consider the two tens, if that makes sense to everyone.
Yeah. Can we get just consensus on who's comfortable sticking with three, or who wants to entertain the other?
Yep. Let's just get consensus on who's comfortable sticking with three.
And then I'll dictate the conversation. And so, for a pulse check for myself, I'm comfortable with three. I recognize less is more. So, three for me as well.
So, we got two board... Three board members that have said three. Anyone else?
I'm good with the three.
You're good with the three?
My vote is a nay. I think that there should be four, and the fourth one should be seven about transparency. I agree with Commissioner Griffin on that one.
So, you won't be able to elevate that fourth one over the fifteen?
Yeah. Is seven... Seven has fifteen.
No, seven has ten.
Okay. I can't see from this part. It looks like fifteen.
It looks like fifteen.
Right, okay.
Well, the one that Commissioner Griffin and Santiago are talking about, is there a way for that to become an interim, or does that not even fit in the interim piece?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's still... Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I'm not sure that it necessarily fits in, or that you'd want to dictate that as... I don't think it would fit as an interim anywhere. What I can say is that as you begin monitoring progress toward the goals, there will definitely be... That will have an academic and fiscal transparency and accountability that comes with it, because the budget, the academic outcomes, all of those things are going to be part of the monitoring process for the student outcome goals. That...
It's part of the rubric, right?
It's part of... Yeah. So, the... Yeah. That the budget, that the superintendent shows that the budget is aligned, that any strategic decisions that need to be made differently would have a fiscal component. So, just offering that, but still...
So, we've got, right now, three board members who are in consensus that three guardrails is good. You have four?
Four.
You have four? So, we got four.
So, is a fifteen... So, there's only one with fifteen points?
There's only one with fifteen points.
Okay. Well, if that's the only option for a fourth one, then I'll say keep it with three.
Keep it with three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that's five. So, is that right? I think that's everyone.
Everyone that's here.
And Griffin said three as well, I think.
Yeah.
So, the next step, and we'll wrap up, but the next step is we'll wordsmith these a little bit, potentially. Won't do anything major, but we'll come back to you to make sure it's okay. What we'll do is work with the administration and the superintendent to say, "These are the three that the board has decided on. Now, we're going to create interim guardrails." And those interims are going to be actually measurable. So, we're going to actually create measures. The superintendent and the team will report on you, report for you, the measures of each of these as we go throughout the year. Does that make sense? So, it'll actually be a measurable... That you'll get... You'll understand. This is how we know whether these are being either honored, or we're making progress on them. The second thing is, and we'll talk about goals, so do you want to talk about the goals really quickly, so we can wrap up?
Yeah. So, I think you all... Oh, thank you. I think you all have the student outcome goals that you've previously adopted in front of you. Am I correct? No?
Yes, we have them.
Oh, not all of you. A little laminated sheet?
Yeah. Yeah. Hold on. Isaiah's is right here.
Got it. So, as you look at your community listening synopsis, at those... That top, where it talks about vision and student outcome goals, I would ask, do you still see that reflected in the goals that you have? Yeah.
We're looking at the board goals?
Yep. Yep, accurate.
I would say absolutely. Like, this reinforces that literacy is such a high priority, as well as math, for community members. We saw that as one of the top things for all of the values, and the vision for the district. And it's also reflected in goals three and four as well.
Yeah. Any...
Although, I will say, our fourth goal, which is about ninth graders earning credits by the end of ninth grade, or in ninth grade, gaining at least five or more credits towards graduation, as a predictor of, like, success, future success, I would say that is one goal of ours that we created prior to these community listening sessions, that we don't see necessarily reflected in the values from our listening that we did.
So, that would be one. You see everything else reflected really clearly, but that last goal around credit bearing by ninth grade, or having...
Yeah, it's not as high as the other ones.
Not as high as the other ones.
I think that high expectations was like the fifth most important community value that was expressed, and so I would say that our goal number four does reflect in it the high expectations we have.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for that observation.
Two things to point out about goal number four, and the goals that you create. The board also has, when you create your goals, more information than the community necessarily has. And so, if the board has information that says that, "Hey, this will help us be on track for, like, college or career, military readiness," things like that, that you want to... The district to focus on, because you know it will help you in the long run, you can create a goal that's not reflected in what you heard from the district, because you have additional information to help you as a board say, "This is important to us."
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, my answer is yes. A lot of what we heard was the foundation and the foundational skills that people are expecting our students to have by graduation, or even by certain grade points. And I think that in the list of board goals, those things are covered. And definitely in the earlier years, you see, you know, all students reading by third grade, three through eight, and even going all the way up to high school, which, like Commissioner Malloy said, is expectations. And so, I do think so. I... Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for that observation. Any other... Any differing...
I feel very comfortable with the direction we're going in, and believe that once we get into the progress monitoring, we'll really hit the sweet spot, if you will, and be moving toward progress.
I just wanted to add that many of the community listening sessions, there were concerns expressed by some community members, several times, several sessions, that they felt that these goals were way too low. That, you know, going from sixteen percent to forty percent in literacy is setting low standards for our students. So, I think there are opportunities for us as a board to educate the community about why that's a snapshot. I think the reading that you gave us to do in chapters seven, eight, and nine kind of spoke to that a little bit.
Yeah.
And how it's not low expectations, but it's part of our SMART goal-setting process. You have to have realistic... It has to be realistic.
Right, right.
Right? It has to be goal-oriented, and you can't set goals... We want a hundred percent of our kids to reach mastery, but we're working in increments of three to five years, and so it wouldn't be realistic to say a hundred percent in three years' time.
Yes, yes, and that's absolutely true. You'll have the opportunity to educate the community as to why the percentages sit where they do, that the absolute vision is for all students to be successful, but this is the next bite out of the apple toward that overall vision. And speaking of which, the percentages, one of the things that we talked about one of the last times we were here was the idea that now that Dr. Rassler is in his seat, that you would anticipate that the strategic plan would change, that strategies to achieve these goals would change. One of the things that we would recommend or suggest that you all entertain is to give Dr. Rassler a full five-year runway with these goals. So, allow for the... That baseline percentage to be set with current data, and then expand the goals out five years from now, and so rework those target measures. Does that... Anybody opposed to that idea?
Are you saying changing the goals now?
No. Keep the goals the same. The percentages, the starting date and percentage would be current, and then move the ending date and the ending percentage...
So, we are changing the... That's what I meant. We're changing the ending date.
The ending date, yes. Give him a full five years.
That is up for you, the board, to decide, but that would be a recommendation. If not, what you're going to do is hold the new superintendent accountable to goals that will expire in 2028. But again, going back to the point about... It depends on where your current status is. We don't know your current status, so we'll work with the district to get your district staff to get your current status. But let's say your current status is slightly higher now than your beginning status a couple of years ago, then you can adjust both the ending date, but you could also adjust the ending target, which would address the feedback that you heard from the community that, "Hey, can we increase these just a bit?"
I do have a question. So, we're changing the end date, but wouldn't we also change the starting date?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-three, so it would become 2025 instead?
Yes.
And whatever the baseline numbers are for 2025, because the baseline numbers that are in here now are the baseline numbers from... And you don't have dates associated with it, but whenever it was started, whenever it was established, 2023, 2024, maybe?
Yeah.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yeah, because those actually don't have starting dates on them, now that I look. Yeah.
Well, in all due fairness, I think that that's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, but I think we would be able to make a better... Give a better answer to it, once we see where we're going to... Where we're at, and how we've reached some of the goals thus far. So, that would be instrumental in making that decision. But I definitely said in the beginning, I think that it needed to be stretched out because of everything that the district has that's happening now, that's going on that needs to be resolved. So, it would only be fair for him to have the autonomy to...
Yeah.
Yep.
So.
Yep, accurate.
I would say absolutely. Like, this reinforces that literacy is such a high priority, as well as math, for community members. We saw that as one of the top things for all of the values. And, and the vision for the district. And it's also reflected in goals three and four as well.
Yeah. Any, any?
Although I will say our fourth goal, which is about ninth graders earning credits by, by the end of ninth grade or in ninth grade, gaining at least five or more credits towards graduation as a predictor of like success, future success. I would say that is one goal of ours that we created prior to these community listening sessions that we don't see necessarily reflected in the values from our, our listening that we did.
So that would be one, you see everything else reflected really clearly, but that last goal around credit bearing by ninth grade or having?
Yeah, it's not as high as the other ones.
Not as high as the other ones.
I think that high expectations was like the fifth most important community value that was expressed. And so I, I would say that our goal number four does reflect in it the high expectations we have.
Yeah. Thank you.
Two things to point out about goal number four and the goals that you create. The board also has, when you create your goals, more information than the community necessarily has. And so if the board has information that says that, hey, this is, will help us be on track for like college or career, military readiness, things like that, that you want to, the district to focus on, because you know it will help you in the long run, you can create a goal that's not reflected in what you heard from the district, because you have additional information to help you as a board say, this is important to us.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Santiago?
Yeah, my, my answer is yes. A lot of what we heard was the foundation and the foundational skills that people are expecting our students to have by graduation or even by certain grade points. And I think that in, in the, the list of board goals, those things are covered. And definitely in the earlier years, you see, you know, all students reading by third grade, three to, three through eight, and even going all the way up to high school, which like Commissioner Malloy said, is expectations. And so I do think so. I, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that observation. Any other, any differing?
Feel very comfortable with the direction we're going in and believe that once we get into the progress monitoring, we'll really hit the sweet spot, if you will, and be moving toward progress.
I just wanted to add that at many of the community listening sessions, there were concerns expressed by some, some community members, several times, several sessions, that they felt that these goals were way too low. That, you know, going from 16% to 40% in literacy is setting low standards for our students. So I think there are opportunities for us as a board to educate the community about why that's a snapshot. I think the reading that you gave us to do in chapters seven, eight, and nine kind of spoke to that a little bit.
Yeah.
And how it's not low expectations, but it's part of our SMART goal setting process. You have to have realistic, it has to be realistic.
Right, right.
Right? It has to be goal-oriented, and you can't set goals, we want 100% of our kids to reach mastery. But we're working in increments of three to five years. And so it, it wouldn't be realistic to say 100% in three years' time.
Yes, yes, and that, that's absolutely true. You'll have the opportunity to educate the community as to why the percentages sit where they do, that the absolute vision is for all students to be successful, but this is the next bite out of the apple toward that overall vision. And speaking of which, the percentages, one of the things that we talked about one of the last times we were here was the idea that now that Dr. Rossar is in his seat, that you would anticipate that the strategic plan would change, that strategies to achieve these goals would, would change. One of the things that we would recommend or suggest that you all entertain is to give Dr. Rossar a full five-year runway with these goals. So allow for the, that baseline percentage to be set with current data, and then expand the goals out five years from now. And so rework those target measures. Does that, anybody opposed to that idea?
Are you saying changing the goals now?
No.
Change, keep the goals the same. The, the percentages, the starting date and percentage would be current. And then move the ending date and the ending percentage.
That's what I meant, we're changing the ending date.
The ending date, yes. Give, give him a full five years.
That is, that is a, that is up for you, the board to decide, but that would be a recommendation. If not, what you're going to do is hold the new superintendent accountable to goals that will expire in 2028. But again, going back to the point about, it depends on where your current status is. We don't know your current status, so we'll work with the district to get your district staff to get your current status. But let's say your current status is slightly higher now than your beginning status a couple of years ago. Then you can adjust both the ending date, but you could also adjust the ending target, which would address the, the feedback that you heard from the community that, hey, can we, can we increase these just a bit?
I do have a question. So we're changing the end date, but wouldn't we also change the starting date?
Yes.
2023, so it would become 2025 instead?
And, and whatever the baseline numbers are for 2025, because the baseline numbers that are in here now are the baseline numbers from, and you don't have dates associated with it, but whenever it was started, whenever it was established, 2023, 2024, maybe?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Yeah, because those actually don't have starting dates on them now that I look, yeah.
Well, in all due fairness, I think that, that's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, but I think we would be able to make a better, give a better answer to it once we see where we're going to, where we're at and how, how we've reached some of the goals thus far. So that would be instrumental in making that decision. But I, I definitely said in the beginning, I think that it needed to be stretched out because of everything that's, the district has that's happening now, that's going on, that needs to be resolved. So it would only be fair for, for him to have the autonomy to have more time to resolve issues that are within the district, because they're so complex. So, yeah, I think once we get that information, that data, we can make a sound decision.
So can I ask, this evening, are we going to walk away with a point of clarity that that is the direction we're going in? Or are you asking us to think on that? Or can we walk away with a definitive, yes, we want to allow for that flexibility?
What I was going to share is we'll get you the information first, so you can make an informed decision. So the information about where you are now, baseline, well, it should inform whether you extend it out five years or whether you, you know, stay where you are. But knowing where you are baseline right now, do you, do you know where you are baseline right now?
We have, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, let me say this, that the state released preliminary data for 24, 25. It has not yet been sent out as, as official from the state, but we do have preliminary data on where we landed this past year with ELA and math assessments.
So if it's preliminary, I would suggest that you don't use it until it's official. But then use that official data as your baseline. But understand what that baseline is now, and then use that to make a determination. Do we keep it 2028? Do we adjust and move it out five years? And if we adjust, what is the baseline relative to what it was or where we are right now and where we want it to be? And then do we adjust the targets five years from now based on what the baseline is now? So all of those things are things that, once you're finalizing information, as a board, you can make that decision. The second thing I'll point out is the next step for us, if, oh, we're not rushing. But the next step for us is to work with the superintendent and the district team on two things. One is developing interim go, guardrails, and we'll go to goals in a minute, but interim guardrails around these are actually measurable. And then the second thing we're going to do is develop interim goals. But the first thing we need to do is say, what's the baseline? And the other thing that you'll need to do as a board is say, okay, here's what we want the ultimate goal to be. We're going to leave it the same, we're going to change it, et cetera. And then we'll work with the administration to create interim goals that they'll report to you on, and that, that will happen at every board meeting throughout the year, where you understand, this is the goal that we're monitoring today. Here's the interim results or the final results. Here's the progress we're making against them, et cetera. And at every board meeting, you're going to know, you won't know for every one of the goals and every one of the guardrails, but at every board meeting, you'll know when there's going to be a report on a goal or a guardrail and update on the progress for it, and those will be your, your conversations that you'll have. So you're actually, you're actually almost there. The last thing I'll share, which is important, as you have now developed the goals and as we work with the administration, just understand, because you just developed this tonight, there may not be a measure for this that currently exists in the, in the, in the district. Does that make sense? And so there may be things like surveys or interim assessments that need to be put in place for you all to now have the interim information that you'll need moving forward. So just know that that is part of the process. What you've created is the direction for the district to say, here's what we want you to start reporting on. It may not be in place yet, and so we'll get from the district, here's our timeline, here's our thinking on when we can start to put some of these things in place to measure this. Make sense?
So any, any questions about that? Okay. So I think the only other thing that I would say, aside from what the superintendent will be doing regarding the data and the interim measures, is that the board will need to start thinking about how, about the communication process back out to the community, about the guardrails and the goals and all of that, so we can start, start working on that as well. And we'll support you with that, too.
Okay, well, we want to, once again, thank you for engaging us in the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Framework, the Council of the Great City Schools. That concludes this evening's board work session for the Rochester City School District.
Good work, everybody.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Griffin, seconded by Commissioner Santiago. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good night.